All right, we have a quorum present.
You know, at the beginning of this meeting, we have these disclosures about who owns property in the CRA, et cetera, and I noticed the staff contact here is you and another gentleman here that works at City Hall. I'd like, from here on out, when we discuss these issues that are going to be coming before us in the future, could we also get a disclosure on who he deals with privately also in some of these issues? I think Ms. Dewees had an issue about the pit slip, and I don't know if any of these -- that or any of these clients are his privately. I think I'd like that disclosure, if we could.
I may defer to our city attorney on that one.
If our Chief of Staff does business with any of these folks privately, I'd like it disclosed when we deal with them publicly. Is that -- I would think that would be reasonable.
Sure.
If you would include that next time, thank you.
All right, Councilman Johnson, next, Councilwoman Pratt.
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our report from our CRA administrator. Thank you for that update.
Okay, between now and 6:00, provide for us a CRA update on projects and activities, and that ends my report on the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll make it quick. You know, there was a discussion that arose out of that CRA meeting that I'd like to follow up on. At the beginning of the meetings of CRA, we have to disclose ownership and property. I think we have three council persons that disclose that, and I noticed on the CRA agenda there that we had two staff members that are the contact persons for the CRA, and one of them has a private law practice here and is a part-time contract employee, and I'd like to make a motion that we have this Chief of Staff, if he's going to be involved with the CRA, make a disclosure also. In the spirit of transparency and openness that we talk about so often here at City Hall, I'd like to make a motion that as we move forward, that he discloses who he deals with in a private -- with his private law practice, that he also deals with in the CRA at City Hall. So I'll make that motion, that we demand a disclosure from him, that he deals with privately that he also deals with publicly.
I'm not sure about it being in order, not one is whether it's even appropriate for City Council to address it, or if that's an item for the CRA itself. I'm not voicing approval or disapproval in that motion. And if we -- if it is in order for the City Council to address it, is that we would do it during new business.
Okay, well, that's fine, but again, well, how did we come about the disclosures that we have to have for property ownership? However, that mechanism happened, and I suggest we --
Yeah, I think that's by law. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. From this point forward, I've been appointed to be the staff member that's overseeing CRA, and I have no business interests in the CRA, however I do work and play here.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Yeah, he is the new staff contact for the CRA, Mr. Reynolds is.
Boy, isn't that convenient?
Okay, all right. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to clarify what the disclosure -- where the disclosures came from, but I don't need to do that now, thank you.
Ms. Dewees.
You can clear my line, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that does conclude your report, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'm going to try to make this --
Okay.
Let me try to make this quick. You know, I made some comments in our last, not today, but our last CR meeting about disclosure, about our Chief of Staff and who he does business with privately, that he might be doing business with publicly. And, you know, I really appreciate the comments that I received from folks, you know, saying, you know what, that's really not an unreasonable request, that that really is really appropriate, that I want to thank all those folks that stopped me in the street and mentioned that. So I'm considering a motion right now that we -- you know, we have a part-time contract employee that has a private law practice. I drive by the sign every day on 13th and Servantes, and yet, there seems to be a question if he's doing business with folks or entities that do business with the city, if he's doing business with them privately and also publicly, which I think is very inappropriate. And I could give some examples, but, you know, we can all kind of come up with our own examples and on our own, I'm sure, but, you know, if there's no problem, then I don't see any problem why he wouldn't submit that list. But I just really feel like after talking, you know, people stopped me in the street talking to me about this, and then also running it by other folks, and people saying, you know, this is real -- that's really appropriate. I mean, you know, with this administration, this City Hall, we talk about openness and transparency. And, you know, I think it's time that we have that list, and so I would like to make a motion that we have Thursday presented to us a list of his client list that he currently has, that he's doing business with privately, that he -- also businesses coming before the city in a public matter also.
Second.
You know, and I hear you, and I'm going to act on that motion, but I hate for this council to start vouching out on doing an investigation without providing any specific evidence to this group that we have a problem. I would hate for somebody to make some charges against -- and bring it against me, and can't cite anything specifically as to what actually is going on. I'm not saying it's appropriate that we do that, and I don't think this council has the authority to do that. So I'd like to get an opinion from council here in that regard, because, and I understand where you're coming from, but if you've got evidence, let's bring forth that, and then we can cite it and go forward, but I don't want to go out on doing an investigation on folks without any kind of specific evidence. Could you please give us an opinion on that?
Right there, but, you know, Mr. Messer, I think routinely identifies people that he does business with privately. I think Mr. Samuel Bearden was an example. When he came before this council a few months ago, he said, you know, and I appreciate the honesty and openness and transparency of that, but Mr. Messer himself says, you know, I do business with Mr. Bearman privately, and now we're talking about doing publicly. I don't see anything that's out of line. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. If, you know, if there's no problem, then let's be open and transparent. I mean, to me, it's just, it makes sense, and if there is some questions out there in the community, let's just have an answer. I don't really see the -- unless there's something to hide. If there's nothing to hide, then what's the problem? Mr. Messer, I'd like to hear from you if that's --
Well, that's a -- thank you, Councilman Johnson, at this late hour to present me with that sticky lollipop. I appreciate that.
It's not mine.
Exactly. Well, first of all, I would say that, you know, the Florida Code of Ethics requires all attorneys to be, among other things, self-reporting. So, for example, each attorney is required to disclose a conflict that that attorney knows of. So, you know, under that analysis, you know, I disclosed at one point my business relationship with Mr. Bearman, and I would hope that other attorneys that are bound by the Code of Ethics would undertake the same self-disclosure.
So what does that mean?
Tell me again the question. I mean, I'm not -- if you're at --
Well, a motion has been put forth here that we ask --
Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff.
Part-time contract employee.
Who is a contract employee.
Part-time.
Part-time contract employee to give us a list of his clients, so we can make a determination as to whether it's conflict prevention or not.
Well, if he's doing business with them privately, and he's also doing business with them publicly, I would like to see that list, and I would like details of why that's acceptable, if there is such a thing. Is that unreasonable? I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable at all.
Well, again, I sort of go back to what -- in a vacuum, if you're asking me if that's an unreasonable request, I would say it's probably not an unreasonable request, but I would think that before we make that request, that there ought to be some sort of basis for it. I mean, if the question is, does the council have the authority, I would think the council has the authority. The question is, what's the individual going to do? I don't know there's any way to compel that information. And look, I'll admit, I'm struggling here. I mean, it's an interesting question, and I'm not here to comment on someone's ethics or lack of ethics. I just go back, quite honestly, the framework is set up for individuals to be self-reporting, and I don't know what else to say other than that.
So what I'm hearing from you, that it's okay for us to do this?
You know, I'm not trying to dodge this. I'm just saying that, you know, okay is a qualitative word. I don't know if it's okay or not. I'm saying that if there's a motion that's seconded, and there's five votes, you know, we'll see what happens. I mean, it's not illegal for you to do that, you know, and you're going to have to deal with a response.
Okay, questions, comments, you've got a motion seconded, and you know what the motion is. Questions? Yes?
Well, I wasn't here when --
You're the attorney. Give us some insight.
Well, it's not a matter of being an attorney. The, you know, the motion is to ask Mr. Asmar to disclose the names of any clients he has privately that are also clients of the city of Pensacola. Is that correct?
Vendors, clients.
Lobbyists.
Lobbyists, you know, the whole gamut of legal ease that you attorneys understand and us lay people --
Well, I mean, I do think that that's important. We do have a Code of Ethics for employees and council members and public officials to go by. I think everybody should be bound by that Code of Ethics. The council certainly has the authority to investigate and subpoena records, however. What concerns me, though, and what I haven't heard, is the fact, is while we may have a -- you may have a suspicion of something, what is the factual basis for the motion? I would like to see a factual basis for the motion, rather than just going on a fishing expedition. I have a --
Well, this is not a fishing expedition. I have a particular -- someone in mind, and I'm going to -- it'd be very curious to me, and I really don't want to name that entity. I don't think that that's appropriate either, but I have someone in mind that I can tell you on it that I have. I'll raise my right hand and swear to it, and I would be very curious to see if he comes forth and says that he represents them. It will be very interesting to see that, but I'm not on a fishing expedition. I'm not going down some bunny trail. I have some information that I'm bringing forward to this council. If this council doesn't want to support me, then I understand that, but if there's nothing to hide, there's nothing to hide.
Okay, let me -- I'd like to respond to that, okay. I would -- I would love to support this motion, however, I find it hard to justify it when I don't have some factual basis. And if you have information that someone is possibly doing something unethically, I think you have an obligation to bring it before the City Council, even if you have to disclose the name. Otherwise, you know, I can't go there, because, you know, I'm reminded, at my age, when I was growing up, of the McCarthy error. And I'm -- we just cannot go, you know, without some factual basis, and I believe you when you say that you have that information, but I think that it is incumbent upon you ethically if you know that's -- in fact, that may even be in our Code of Ethics. If you know that someone is doing something that's unethical, and they are an employee or a public official, they're bound by our Code of Ethics, then I think that you need to bring those facts to the City Council, and I won't support the motion until I have a more factual basis, but I will -- if you have a factual basis, and I believe you do, based on what you're saying, but I need to know that.
Let me ask, if I could interrupt you just for one second, then, is it McCarthy-era tactics that we must disclose at the beginning of every CRA meeting if we have ownership and property in the CRA?
No, but what I'm saying to you is that you have the information, but I don't.
But isn't that the same thing, then?
But I need, in order to support your motion, to ask Mr. Asmar to do something, then I need to know why, the factual basis for asking him to do it.
But then, but see, I think if you -- if you're calling this McCarthy-era tactics, and maybe that's not your exact words, but you know what I'm trying to say, then any financial disclosure that I do as a public official, or anything, you know, pertaining to that, then you could use that same analogy for that, then, couldn't you?
No, no, because what you're doing is you're not disclosing to us the factual basis upon which you're making the motion.
But we're being asked to disclose, but anyhow.
I think we --
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting debate, but --
That was my specific point initially, in terms of some specifics that you had, and then I felt that we would be on the ground, and I just feel reluctant to do that without any factual -- that's just me, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I want to go back to the CRA meeting that we actually had this issue come up at, and this council, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a motion was made that we request that list, when Mr. Asmar was the CRA staff member.
Staff contact person.
Staff contact and advising, just like the memo that went out, advising council and the CRA on CRA matters. And Mr. Johnson made a request of that list to ensure that there was not a conflict, and this council supported him. The next meeting of the CRA, it was announced that he is no longer the staff contact for the CRA, that Mr. Reynolds has replaced him, but he is still involved in matters with the city that are affecting the CRA, and I think that's what Mr. Johnson is trying to say to us. We supported this to begin with. There was a change in his title, but it doesn't change the impacts that he has, and if there is a conflict, we need to understand that. I trust my honorable colleague on the other side of the table that says, there's a concern here. There was a concern at that meeting of the CRA, and I don't remember specifically what we were considering, but we heard his concerns then, and I believe we made him -- you made a motion, and it was seconded, and that list was requested at that time, so we may not even need a motion. It may simply be that he -- that Mr. Asmar responded to the initial request. Didn't we? Didn't you make a motion at that time?
I don't recall that. I know that we had the discussion, and then, three days later, he was removed as a contact person, which is almost a kind of a red flag itself, I mean, to be honest with you, but...
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is an odd situation, because to some extent, you know, he -- anyone working for this city might have ties to someone else. They could have a cousin's brother's uncle's friend who is involved with the city's business, and then, as an ethical person, they should say, I will abstain from discussing this, promoting it, whatever, with the mayor. And so, even with that list, the -- and I don't know any of the details. I don't get in the same gossip circles, I guess, but, you know, it is conceivable that he could just say, yes, I represent Mr. Smith on other things, and anytime Mr. Smith's name is mentioned in City Hall, I go, as Councilwoman Dewees one time said, la-la-la-la-la, yeah, and -- Do you want to hear it? And, you know, so I don't know that having this information will answer any questions for us, though, so I won't support the motion, but I would like to see Mr. Johnson approach Mr. Asmar and say, here are my concerns. Refute or deny, you know, accept or deny these to my face, so that I can be assured, because, I mean, we're only as good as our word, and I would hope, particularly with the requirements of the bar, that Mr. Asmar will be an honorable person. Some people might doubt that, but that's all we can hope for. Thank you.
Legal question. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I kind of understand where we're trying to go, but my thinking would be, as a city employee, and this is a legal question, Mr. Messer, could Mr. Asmar be restricted from doing business? Because as Ms. Pratt pointed out, that list could change and be ongoing as people come before the city to do business in the future. This week it may be one, Joe, next week it may be Willie, or, and it'll go on and on, and that'll be an ongoing report. Could the city, as a city employee in Mr. Asmar's capacity, could the city then restrict him, as we've been restricted from contacting staff, et cetera? Could he be issued a similar directive not to do business with people who are going to do business, who are engaging in business with the city? Could that restriction be made?
Remember this, my understanding of Chief of Staff is that he's a vendor to the city, not an employee.
Okay. Okay. Clear?
I think we're dealing with, as earnest as Councilman Johnson is in his request, and as, I think, well-grounded as the request may be, I don't know, and certainly, Mr. Messer, that's why I think the heads were starting to turn in your direction, as we begin to ask, what is this obligation of this vendor, as opposed, in contrast, to us as elected officials that clearly have read the not-so-fine print about what are the troubled waters that we are not to navigate in, and if, for, even if we are, if we fear that we're getting dangerous precariously close to that line, we have an opportunity that is close to an obligation to recuse ourselves from influencing in any way the outcome of an issue that most fundamentally will benefit us personally, individually, or those that perhaps are connected to us through business or partnerships, marriage, et cetera. But in this case, I think, Councilman Johnson, your inquiry might be able to navigate successfully through the waters of sunshine law in the form of a letter that is directed to the mayor who has hired this individual, that specifically outlines what you are requesting, and such correspondence can be, as we all know, circulated to us through the clerk with a request within the body of that letter, that we, as a council, be fully informed. You can take on the laborious task of determining, do you want to begin to designate timeframes, and how that list is, as Councilman Gerald's pointed out, it's a dynamic list, so how often are we given the newest and latest live reports on this person's ongoing activity or business interests? But I think you've made it clear that you have a concern. I think time is of the essence, is the message I'm hearing, given the passion of your appeal, and I just think, again, we've just been reminded, this is a vendor, not an elected official like us. We understand what your goals are, and I've -- and you know what? If the mayor and that particular individual choose to refrain from responding, then, you know, that opens up perhaps another door, but that's my suggestion.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Whether that's council voting to, or that it's coming from the council, that would be my opinion. Now, it's a motion out here in a second, and unless you want to pull it, then...
No, I'd say let's vote on it, and my intentions are known publicly, and I would welcome, if the motion fails, I would welcome Mr. Asmar to take it upon himself to provide that list. And so I'll make that request publicly. If this motion fails, then I publicly request him to give us that list, if this motion fails. And anybody want to put a cup of coffee on it, that we want to see the list? Anyhow, if you want to, I'll call a question.
Okay, question's been called, and you know what the motion is. All in favor of safe motion, please raise your hand. Proposals? Motion, like. Okay, anything else to come forward?
I just wanted to bring up one other budgetary matter. I do have a problem with the Chief of Staff being a vendor and that, rather than an employee, and that's something we could always address, and the budget is to defund that position. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
He wasn't -- you weren't listening.
I'm sorry, I was turning my --
I said, I have a problem with the Chief of Staff being a vendor, rather than an employee, and we can always, through the budget, defund that position.
Well, that's an excellent idea. With all the crime in our city, it'd be nice to have maybe a couple more police officers on the street, trying to combat some of this violent crime we have in our city.
Any other coming forward?
Welcome to the second budget hearing for the City Council to consider our budget for 2013. Mr. Reynolds, before you respond to that, we've got one other councilman that wants to speak, and just kind of let you wrap it up after that. Mr. Johnson.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, and I'm going to kind of tack on to what Dr. Pratt said. I appreciate that. It's kind of like, you know, the contract, the advertising contracts explained to us after there seems to be an issue raised. It would have been nice to be included in the process. It would have been nice if the agency would have come before this council, and the mayor even, and explained to us their intent and their, what they hope to accomplish with this, and, you know, maybe even ask for input for us. I know that we're rarely asked for input unless we now determine that we have a, we have some rights, and we have an opportunity here with this budget to be heard. And when issue is brought up that there could be a problem with this contract, all of a sudden, we have Zimmerman here before us, Monday, to give us an hour and a half presentation explaining their contract, and what we can expect, and who their client list is, and it was oppressive client list, I must say, but it's unfortunate that we weren't included in the decision and the process. included in the decision and the process. But that happens often, often with this council. And we hear about how there seems to be this pull and tug between the both branches of government. But if some would just include this, if they would include this, us, in some of this process and decision-making, instead of almost having it forced upon us to a certain degree, you know, maybe things would go a little bit smoother. But that doesn't seem to be the way things happen here. But it would have been nice to be included in this decision and process of this huge contract that's happened. So, and I also want to touch on something that happened to me a couple of months ago. My special friend and I were down south, and there was a lady, there was a park ranger there at this park we went to, and she said that her and her husband were talking about relocating to Pensacola, Florida. And she said she Googled Pensacola, Florida, and that after they had Googled Pensacola, Florida, that they had, they had, were reconsidering. And this is a person I had never met before. We had just come upon them at Fort Jefferson in the park down there. Again, it was a park ranger. And she said that crime was the reason that they were reconsidering moving to Pensacola. It wasn't because we didn't have an adequate rebranding effort, or we weren't slickly advertised, or we didn't have a cool slogan, but it was crime. It was crime. Councilwoman Myers said Monday that she thought about making a motion to adjust a part of the budget, $120,000, at the very end of our meeting Monday. And I said, yeah, that would be money I think well-spent on fighting our violent crime in our community. That's what concerns me, that I'm not sure, when we talk about loss of population and these things, I think that branding is a part of that, but I think that we also must consider issues such as crime, and are we, is our money better spent, you know, in advertising, spending all that money on advertising? Or would it be better, maybe, thinking of ways, creative ways to fight crime and those type of things? You know, educating our youth and trying to keep them off the streets in crime situations. So I'm struggling with all this, but we're trying to make a good decision. I'm looking forward to hearing from the rest of council. Thank you.
All right. The streets are looking pretty good right now.
Yeah, they probably are. I'm Eric Goss, and the president of the Paternal Order of Police, Lodge 71, members of the makeup of the Pensacola Police Department. I'm not here on behalf of the Pensacola Police Department, I'm here on behalf of my members. They'd probably like to tell you all themselves, but a little worried about talking to you all individually since the new, whatever got passed down through the charter. I will say, I'm not a budget expert, and I'm just hoping you don't rubber stamp a lot of things that are going through. We got Mr. Reynolds talking about leaving no one behind. Well, my guys, it felt like they've been left behind for about six years now. I'm not going to go into specifics, because we were helping negotiate fairly, which we're still going through, and, well, the budget's getting passed anyways, no matter what happens. I will say that in my 14 years of being there, my members are, they're down, and they're hurting. And it's been over and over again, and we feel like we're being overlooked. Especially when we saw this budget that came out, a million dollars for a seventh-floor administration, you got money here and there, and they tell us, there's no money, there's no money. And I see why. I see why there's no money. I just hope that y'all don't sit here and rubber stamp this. I mean, you got guys that are out there that are missing their holidays, their birthdays, that are working nights. So y'all are safe getting shot at, having to shoot others. It's nothing like y'all seen. And it's just, it's sad looking at this, and it's sad hearing the big room going back and forth. And just want y'all to know that there's others that are really hurting, that this budget does affect. Look at that. Okay? That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson, Ms. Myers.
Yes. Detective Goss, thank you for all that you do, and all the police officers do for our city. I appreciate that. My comments earlier weren't directed to them. I know they're doing all they can with the resources that they have available to them. Mr. President, can I get some clarification from staff, please, on the mayor's line item 9335 on professional services, the 132? I was considering a motion to adjust that by $120,000 and direct that money to the police department for fighting crime. Could I get some clarification on how that motion needs to be made, if that's appropriate, et cetera?
Sure. I think we don't need much weighing in from Mr. Barker on that, considering what he just told us. But would you like to respond, Mr. Barker?
Yes. Mr. President, if I understood Councilman Johnson's inquiry, is that he would like to know if we reduce line item 9335, how to get it into the police department budget? Is that the question?
Yes, sir. To fight crime, that I feel that is needed.
It would be much like the motion that Ms. Myers just made, as it related to the general fund, in that you would move $120,000 from the professional services in the mayor's budget and move it into the police department budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion that's in order, and I just wanted to ask you if you would consider a friendly amendment in putting that into the police officers' training fund.
So moved, and I will accept that. Yes.
Second stand.
Okay. Ms. Myers.
I didn't have my light on, it was already on. I didn't have my light on to speak to that. She just keeps it on.
Okay. Are any comments from the public on Mr. Johnson's amendment? Okay. All right. Good. All right. Please vote. And that passes on a vote of seven to one. Okay. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be brief, because I made council aware that I would be bringing this up about the Zimmerman contract. And council may be perfectly pleased with the amendment that was made, but when I listen to council and the concerns that they have, and I've heard from the citizens at length about the issues that they have with how this was accomplished, some things that have come to light since the contract was signed in March, the issues in Ocaloosa County of the fraud that was down there, the ongoing investigation, the lack of accounting controls and procedures with the yacht being purchased for $710,000, the issues. But beyond that, that the, what I've heard from citizens is that this glimpse, as we're told, this isn't everything, that there's more to come, from the Zimmerman agency has truly missed their mark. And I don't want to go into too much detail, but the same week that this was rolled out, you know I have the honor of greeting international visitors with the citizen diplomacy, and the group from Turkmenistan had come. And I'll probably blog about this, because the irony is just too big to let that pass by. But they were going through a necessary rebranding at that point. Their leader, for many years, had changed the days of the week to his mother's name and his name, and other family members changed the national anthem, changed, it was just, it was a terrible situation. But the irony of that is that we had to tell them and explain to them that we were being rebranded, and that we used to be the city of five flags. And I can't tell you how proud I am to share Mayor Emeritus Vince Webb's speech and greeting with international visitors, and part of that being the city of five flags. And it was a gut check for me. It was a reality check, that, you know, this proposed history, 50 million that UWF wants to do, it has everything to do with our Spanish occupation, and our British time, and our French, and our Civil War era. That we're the city of five flags. And the Zimmerman agency has come up with a rebranding that the citizens that I've heard from don't feel is necessary. We are the city of five flags. But beyond that, this contract, and the way funds were gathered up from unfilled funded positions, and from all different areas of our budget for fiscal year 12, I still question. I can't get an answer from anyone. And I have a finance background, and have put it all together and listed it out. It just didn't make sense. But I've listened to you tonight, and I've heard Councilman Gerald's concerned about our shrinking population and the revenue stream. Dr. Pratt, you talked about duplication of effort. Why are we turning our back on the TDC and the chamber, and the county for that matter? Ms. Myers, talking about Uptown, and that no incentives are being given to businesses that are building at a pace that is, you know, 10 times more than anywhere else in the city. And Councilman Johnson talking about that it's too late for them to come on Monday and explain to them what their vision is for the city, and that we weren't included in the process. Bottom line, if we don't take a good look at this, and send this back to the mayor and staff, and say, there has to be some policy decisions made here, this has to be something that council addresses, this is not good government. Bottom line. And that's why I feel the need to just defund the entire contract, reset, take a better look at this, and include the citizens. This is their city, and it's their taxpayer dollars, and it's their, you know, three-year contract that you've entered into for, on their behalf. So I'm making a motion to defund the remaining portions of the Zimmerman contract, and return that amount to fund balance.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd like to comment on the statements that Councilwoman DeWes said. I think that this passes. I think that we, at some point, this city has got to start getting on the same page, reading from the same playbook as the TDC. We've got three different advertising efforts going on right now. And we've got Visit Pensacola. We've got, I'm looking at an invitation right now from Greater Pensacola Chamber that's got another logo with the arrows on it. And we've got a third effort now going on with the upside of Pensacola and our new logo. The, Ms. Zimmerman talked about confusion Monday, and I spoke about being confused, about, we've got three, we've got at least three efforts going on advertising our community. And if this motion passes, I would encourage the mayor's office to, let's all try to get on the same page. We spoke about Montgomery, Alabama, and how they all are on the same page. And it doesn't seem to be real difficult for them. I believe their population in the city of Montgomery is 200,000 people, included in that county, there, inside that county, which is somewhat large itself. So it can be done. I think Ms. Zimmerman even talked about that it does happen in other communities. But this fragmented effort that we have here, it's just real hard for me to stomach and swallow. I just don't know if this is in the best interest of this city, of this community, of this whole area, really. I'd like to see a more combined effort with the TDC and the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Pensacola. It seems very easy and logical to me to get out on our own. I just, I struggle with that. I think that we, I think Councilwoman Pratt talked about duplication. And I'm wondering if we're just not duplicating things, if we're not sending a confusing message out there as we promote our city. So I'll look forward to hearing from other council people, but it's very interesting comments, Councilwoman DeWes, but I'd like to see us all try to get on the same page, that being the TDC, the chamber, and the city of Pensacola. Thank you.
I think this is a worthy discussion to have at a future council meeting. And I think that basically, our actions on Ms. Myers' motion bring us to definitely have sent the message, and it brings this conversation back to us. We will be finding out a lot more about this contract, and the details, and unwinding clauses, and things like that. So I think that at this time, Ms. Myers' motion is sufficient to effect some of the change. As Mr. Reynolds said, we have to change the dynamic, have to do something different, and not just with advertising, but with how this government has functioned. And I think that we've sent that message with our amendments tonight, and I'm eager to vote on the budget as amended. Thank you.
Mr. Bierwood, are you interested in speaking to the proposed amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Please come up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just reading over the Zimmerman agreement. I think it's very interesting. I hope I'm calmer when I'm sitting up there than when I sit out here, because I get more excited out here. But it says, under miscellaneous provisions, no waiver, alterations, consent, or modification of any of the provisions of this agreement shall be binding unless and writing and signed by the mayor or his designee. And that kind of makes me a little bit nervous. It's a very simple document. There's not a lot to it, not a lot of opt-out clauses or anything. And what this amounts to is a surprise, a big surprise, for the council, for the citizens. And while I respect Councilman Spencer's hearing from people that they're positive about it, I was out walking door to door quite a bit during my campaign, and after this was sprung on me, after I got an invitation through another person to attend, I was quite surprised we were abandoning the five flags and going with a new, completely different logo, that really didn't make a lot of sense to me. And the people that I shared it with, it wasn't everybody, it was quite a few, they were very upset, because they didn't think that anything was wrong with the city of five flags. And, you know, we've got our union, the head of our police union here, morale is down in the police force. They're working 12-hour shifts, which was an issue a couple of years ago when I was running for mayor, is that 12-hour shift is a long time for somebody to be on the job. And we need more opportunities for the police to be out there doing community policing, not running from one call to another. And I think we need some more funding within the police department. You know, we've got a million-dollar incentive fund for economic development that we're talking about as well. And I can think of nothing better for economic development than making sure we have a safe city, because no one, just like the web search that was done when it was Googled, you know, if you Google this place, and you see all the drive-by shootings and everything, which a lot of stuff pops up quickly, because PNJ and Gannett pay a lot more for their rankings than everyone else does, that's what our identity is going to be, are things like that. And we have got to make sure, before we put a new face on this place, that we have the type of place people want to come to. And I'm understanding what, I understand what Mr. Reynolds is saying about the 50,000. We don't need to drop below 50,000. But the fact is, is we've got to focus on what it is that the city has to do, what its fiduciary responsibility is to do, and that's not to market. It is to make sure our citizens are safe, and there are opportunities for them to live and play and work. And I just, I believe that this contract was done in a way that just kind of didn't even include you, and I think that's wrong. I think as the governing body of this city, which clearly states in the charter you are, you should have been involved. The community should have been involved, should have been like in Tallahassee, where they had the city and the county involved. One of my issues when I ran was that I think we need to work together better as a city and a county. And I think doing this creates a separate entity to market, which we don't really need. And a lot of what the marketing, it's not business, it's not really even, a lot of it's not even for business, marketing to business, it's through ESPs, through the airport, and I've seen that commercial, I posted on YouTube so everyone could see it. I don't think that is a very good job branding us at all. It's not Pensacola-related, it's some type of ad that I think anyone, probably my son could do with a computer and some type of video programming software. It doesn't brand us. And I just urge that you think more carefully about this decision on this particular amendment, because I think you have an opportunity here to take action, and to defund this item, and send a message back that we want to be included as the governing body. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm real proud of this council tonight. You know, I think this is a real healthy debate. We'll probably be beat up in a blog tomorrow. A person that has the blog will probably write his own comments and use a different name, and beat us up pretty good. But I'm really proud of this council tonight for the debate, this healthy debate that we're having. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. I think this council is starting to find its footing about some different powers that it's had. It seems like the last few months, this council's come together, and I'm proud of the council. Again, we'll be beat up and called names and that and all, and I guess that's part of the job. But I wanted to also comment on Mr. Bier, Councilman-elect Bier's comments about crime. And again, I don't want to go through the story again about when you Google Pensacola, but, you know, if someone Googles Pensacola, or they hear about this upside, and they go, oh, God, I'm real excited, and they Google us and find out we have crime, it hurts this community. And I sometimes wonder about our priorities. Of course, advertising's important, marketing is important. I recently had a friend of mine tell me that he stopped advertising, and his client went down to, he had two calls at his office that week. He started advertising again, they had 100 calls the next week. So advertising, I know, is important, and I think it's of value. So advertising, I know, is important, and I think it's of value, and I support an effort in that regard, but we must have our priorities, if, again, people Google us, and they show, it turns up that we have high crime, if we have drive-bys, if we have shootings five out of seven days a week, it's reported in the news journal on WARTV, I'm just not sure that that's a good thing, or I know it's not a good thing. You know, I watch our local TV station, and I encourage everyone here, and everyone that's listening out there, to watch it, the first five or seven stories are about crime, we watched the 10 o'clock news last night, it's depressing, we watched it last night, and I encourage everyone to, I believe the first seven stories was about crime in this community, but yet we feel that it's very important to go through with this advertising contract, so sometimes I question our priorities, we talked, we had a detective here that I have a lot of respect for, I have a lot of respect for our police department, that talks about 12-hour days, that talks about poor morale, I hope that this council heard it, and I think they did, and I hope that everyone in this community heard it, I want to do something about that, I want to do something about crime in our community, that's the things that are important to me at this point, again, I understand the importance of advertising, of branding, and all that, we heard of the successes of Austin and Charlotte Monday, when lately, the, excuse me, when, I guess Better Late Than Never Zimmerman came before us and explained their vision, Better Late Than Never, and again, we weren't included in that process, I wish we would have, but on a positive note, and I hope, I want to end this in positive, Ms. Myers, I was with a realtor today in beautiful Uptown Pensacola, they're in district, in your district, and they're talking about a Costco that was looking at some property there, they were talking about a Dick's Sporting Goods that was looking at a piece of property there near Cudovamall, and amazingly, there was no talk of any incentive, any loan forgiveness, or tax abatement, or anything, so might have a couple more new businesses there, but with that, I'll close, and listen to the rest of the council, but I'm proud of the council today, tonight, I'm sure we'll be beat down tomorrow, so just get prepared, and, again, I look forward to hearing from the rest of the council, thank you.